Called me to order, stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the lurches to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone get a chance to read last month's minutes?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve July's minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve July's minutes.
Second, call in favor?
Aye.
Uh, new business at decorum laws, do you have that or Kerry, do you have a copy of that?
I've got the house next to it, but I wasn't prepared for anything for that because I was a little.
Oh, you told me to, I wrote it in my notes to put it on the agenda for this month. So I guess.
I think Mara would've got back with me because I brought it up to last meeting.
Okay, then we can table that and do it next month.
But I do, I do have copy of the house bills on that.
So I, I have an update on that.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So there are, there's basically a three-strike policy you guys can adopt. The rule is though you just have to post it at the entrance or announce it before the meeting. Basically on the third strike, a member can escort anybody that's disruptive out. So yeah.
Okay.
But we can, we can work with you guys and develop the policy.
I would recommend.
Emailing that to me and I can, or to me and everybody else so they can look over it and then they can vote on it next month.
Okay.
But I would recommend if you do, do that.
Yeah.
Like I said, post it towards the entrance and post it from right there in front of your, on your guys' bench, right there in front of everybody so they can see it too.
Right.
Which we can have less, make up a sign or do whatever, however we decide to do it, that's what I would recommend we do.
Just have to, pretty well, to me and I can get it to them so they can look over it and vote on.
I'm gonna get a motion to table the decorum law until next month.
I'll make a motion to table the decorum law until next month.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
And if anybody needs a copy.
I would like a copy. I haven't had a chance to look at that.
You gotta make an email form.
I can, yeah, you can email.
Just shoot it to me at some point, please.
Okay.
If anybody's sending it to me, then that's fine too if you wanna.
There we go.
I don't know.
It's easy to read on that big monitor.
You know, you say that printout, that's pretty small.
It is.
I like them. Personal sick days.
Hey, so we had talked about, me and you had talked about that as far as just briefly, as far as the, um, comp, was it the comp?
The issue is the sick days, like when I started, sick days didn't roll over till the next year. Only vacation days did because they had comp, they could use comp, comp time.
Right.
Well, when we took the comp time away, we made it to where the sick days rolled over, but there was a cap on them. Well, now that they have comp time back, the question has arose on whether to let them roll over those sick days still when they don't have to use them, they can use comp time.
Cause the way it is now, cause we changed it from eight hours a day to forty hours a week now, so now they're, you know, if.
They're not required to use that PTO and sick days aren't earned, they're given.
Right, so instead of them rolling them over, they, if they don't use them, they need to lose them because if they.
They will just get five more at the beginning of the year instead of adding five to what they have left over.
Yeah, since we changed it to where, like, um, if they had doctor's appointments that they could cut, uh, they have in, they come in early or they stay over late. Um, if they want to leave early, they just do.
An emergency arises, whatever.
They don't have to use it anymore because they get to come in and go out whenever they want to where as far as letting them continue to roll that over, that that should've been part of the change to where it does not roll over anymore.
What would that need to be put in the personal policy like that then?
Yeah, we'd have to change it, but I wasn't going to change it until it was discussed and you guys decided if you wanted to change it and how you wanted to change it.
I, I'm like, I'm with Mike, I think they, once, the end of the year, if they don't use them, they're gone.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Then I will get the changes made and get it emailed and then we can, um, actually vote on the changes next month.
Yep.
Okay.
Sick leave you're talking about?
Personal days and sick days.
Okay.
Their vacation days will still roll over.
Vacation days, they can still roll over. But like their personal days and sick days.
Because they can come in early now.
Right.
Like, I mean, if David wanted to work five to whatever, whatever that comes to, five to three, or no, two.
Yeah.
One.
One, there you go. Hey, if you're not doing ten, eleven hour days, you're not working, so, but anyways, they can come in early, so.
Right.
You know, there's no sense in them letting that add accumulate and then that didn't, we could wind up hanging them out on that side.
Okay, next.
Uh, department reports, per, when we talked, Horace said something about last month.
Yeah.
That we do not.
Want me to tell y'all how they did them when I first started before you guys were here? When it came time to do, do, department reports, of course, there were department heads back then. And for example, Larry Street was over the water and back up to the sewer. So when it came department reports and they said, what's the water doing? Larry would say, Ron told me everything's going good, we ain't got no problems, that was the end of it. Then if there was something he needed to ask for, either La- Ron told Larry or Ron was of course here then, he would speak up and say, I need this backup meter, or I need to go to this conference, or, that's how they did them then. So if you guys wanna change it to that and still have them print those out to where they're in the paperwork, that's fine. There's, I agree that there's no need to read those word for word.
The way Mara explained it last month, that basically we just needed that if they had a want, a need list or something that needed voted on.
Yeah, just saying everything's okay and we don't need anything, or but we need this. I agree. So I don't know if you wanna.
I was gonna say.
Take a vote to see that everybody agrees with doing them that way.
Any discussion on that?
I like seeing what the discharge is, how everything's going.
Right, but I mean, it's like, we don't have to read it.
No, I think fine, as far as them writing them out.
I think they need to write them out or whatever and put them so that they're in their file.
Yeah, I think it's a waste of our time to say.
That way I have it in my paperwork for my audits.
Right.
I have the.
Yeah, so they're still gonna continue to write them out, but we're not really having a discussion over it and reading it until there is something that's needed.
So the, I guess the vote would be have department reports prepared but not read.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to have the department reports written up but not written out there in council meetings.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the B and B invoice.
Right there.
I don't know, I got something in my pocket, it's been bugging me all day, or this evening. I know. Last month, we talked about the topsoil and they were told seven hundred and fifty dollars and then by my recollection, Kyle told them one load of dirt for, and we only had seven hundred and fifty dollars to spend. And it appears that they had brought two loads of topsoil and charged us nine hundred dollars. For a hundred and fifty dollars more than, we got an extra load, I think, I mean, you guys will use it, will you not?
We'll use it, but it's not, what we have there is less than a tri-axle look for what he sold us at nine hundred.
Which during the email what I had stated was, that's the reason why we always get quotes on anything that we're doing regardless if the council's approved it or not. Whoever you're getting a material from or anything from, you wanna get a quote in writing before they actually deliver it, otherwise we're gonna wind up in the same boat that we're in. Where I have no doubt that Kyle probably knew that what the limit was and probably related to him, but what he sends a bill for is what he sends a bill for, cause we never got a quote.
Yeah, we can't hold B and B, we can't short them because they didn't provide a quote that was voted on to where they knew they couldn't go over that. It was just word of mouth.
So, I mean, that's the only thing I was referencing, I wasn't pointing no fingers at Kyle or anything else. I just stated the facts that that's the reason why we get quotes on everything before we do anything.
And that's why I asked, cause I wasn't gonna get paid, wasn't going to pay it and then get asked later on why I paid nine hundred dollars when that's not what was approved.
This is water in sewer though.
Correct.
Cause that's what it was.
It was sewer is, is.
It was more.
Initially, yes.
Initially.
Cause that was to fill the separate tank holes, yep.
So, right. So do we need to vote to pay that out a hundred and fifty dollars?
That's what Mara said.
Yeah.
I spoke with her and she said that you guys can consider a special claim to pay the excess, but that needs to be voted on next meeting. But you can go ahead and pay the seven fifty that was approved of. But just vote for the special claim now and then vote next meeting.
Okay, Howard, that makes sense?
So you.
You take seven fifty.
What was approved of, you can go ahead and pay that, but you guys can agree to move forward with the special claim, but that needs to be voted on next meeting.
Okay.
And I understand what she's saying, the claims docket like that they vote on at the end of the meeting is for last month's claims. I can still, you guys can approve or need to pay it all, and I can pay it all, but the additional hundred and fifty will be on next.
Next month, yeah.
Yeah, well, both of them will be on next month, cause I haven't paid the seven fifty yet either. So yes, you have to vote on the additional hundred and fifty dollars.
Can I get a motion to pay the additional hundred and fifty?
I'll make a motion to pay the additional hundred and fifty.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Was that five ayes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, unfinished business, the visitors forum. That was another thing that Mara had discussed.
And we tabled it so you guys could think about it more because she said either you need to allow them to speak or not allow them to speak. Not, if they have something they wanna say, call and get on the agenda just cause they have something they wanna say.
Isn't it on that book that if it, they wanna speak, they have a certain section named.
But that includes having a visitor's forum. That's what she said last month. If you're going to the, allow them to speak, then you need to keep it the way it is now. Otherwise they cannot speak. Correct?
Yes, and if it's, if it's just a regular public meeting, they don't have a right to speak just to attend and observe. If it's a special hearing or.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, they have a right to speak.
So basically like tonight.
A public hearing is like what we had last month.
Right, right, but I'm saying like a normal meeting, th- there's no legal requirement that they have to speak, have a right to speak.
So if you take it out, then they won't be allowed to speak.
Unless they call and get on the agenda, correct?
I mean, you said that to her and she kinda made a face at that idea, cause she says you can't have everybody down.
It's either, either, yeah, and.
Yeah.
Either allow it or don't allow it.
Yeah.
And that's it.
So what's everybody's?
Thank you.
I, I, I'm getting what you're trying to say.
The voices of people is always been at the forefront, so I think that, um, we should not hinder any of them from being allowed to speak. Because any problems that we have had has been council members at the root of the issue on that side of it, so, I mean.
And with the decorum laws now, we really don't have to worry about the other issues.
Probably as far as bad behavior and stuff like that, I mean, but I mean, there again, I mean, they still have their First Amendment right as far as on that side of it. It's just they have to conduct themselves in a proper manner on that side of it, so I.
Yeah.
I agree with that, I think they, but we haven't had, we've just had those occasional issues with people. I think we should let people speak as needed.
So you don't, huh?
I agree.
So you don't really need to vote, what it's, everybody agrees to leave it the same.
Okay, department head Cecil, was this you?
It was, and I wanted to ask since, uh.
Me. Talked to Aubrey, is that what she was getting ready to say?
Well, I was gonna say since, since he came, was, let's say, legal representatives, I'm starting to think of a good term. Um, Aubrey previously had recommended that we have, uh, department heads. And I was wondering if your firm, if you guys believe that also.
That's, that's something I'd have to look into, speak with him.
I will tell you that Mara asked me after the first or second meeting she attended, who was the supervisor over who? And I told her we don't have department heads anymore and she frowned.
Well, it's supposed to be set one year from the time that the new ones were hired as far.
No, we're not talking about that, we're talking about council members being department heads.
Oh, over, okay.
I don't agree with having department heads.
Well, with not having any nobodies, nobody's boss and things don't get done, cause nobody checks on anybody. When we had department heads, they checked on their departments. Larry Street was forever riding his bike checking on what was being done. Larry Stigall checked on what was being done.
If they have two, two department workers that have an issue with one or over an issue, they're both gonna call their department heads and that's gonna cause friction between the board members and then all the board members are gonna need to get involved in anyway.
But they do it now.
Yeah.
Whenever one gets mad, he makes a phone call, every time. And then he doesn't talk to me for a month.
He's here for. Cecil, anything?
Well, that's why I was kinda wanting to hear everybody's feedback on how they felt about it.
I think there should be department heads, so.
Cause right now you got one, two, that are checking up on work and then the guys get mad because they say they're being picked on. But they're the only two council members that's actually going around and looking to see what's done and what's not done.
Well, I'm not here to do that.
I don't have a job where I can just show up, though, I mean.
Yeah.
I know that, I understand, I'm not saying that I do it every day.
The, I mean, as far, the way I look at it, these guys are grown men, if they don't know what their job is, then they, then they need to go elsewhere.
Yeah, but we've had this discussion, we've given out on how many times the job duties and they're still not being done, so.
Well, now, because I haven't, I'm not really receiving your report about what there is, what they have done, well, I shouldn't say that. You guys do talk to me about what they, what they do from time to time. But, uh, I really don't hear anything about things aren't getting done. I think the only complaint I've heard at times, not recently, is that they needed help and didn't have it.
Be referenced to, who needs help and does not have it?
Well, if somebody's working digging a hole and they need help after they have completed their duties elsewhere, say like the water and sewer guy, after they're done with their morning responsibilities there, whatever they have to take care of. Do they, and Kyle needs help. Uh, one of those guys don't help him or vote. But like I said, that hasn't been a recent complaint, that's just an, just an example.
And there again, I know I've said it before and I know people get tired of me bringing up Ron, but when Ron was here, Ron did the water of the sewer, it took him all day, five days a week, that's all he did. He did not help the street person. That is why we didn't have a leaf back, cause when it was brought up and Ron was asked if he had time to help, he said he really didn't have time to help with doing that. So I don't understand why it's an issue for the street person needing so much help with his duties and yet still there are yards growing out into the street, the curbs aren't painted, stuff is not done. John Reese, everybody complained about him and said he didn't do his job, but there was a hundred percent more done then than there is now. And I don't understand why it keeps being allowed.
Good job duties have been given out and that, that is their main focus, whether it be water, sewer, or street. That is what they're supposed to do from the time they clock in till the time that they clock out on that side of it. Um, and if one of them does have a bigger project as far as on that side of it, whenever there has been, um, I've seen them help each other as far as on that side of it, but, um, you have to do your dailies first and not show up on other projects when your daily still are not done during the day. Cause just, just because the water and sewer has to read numbers in the morning, that doesn't mean their morning routines are done on that. They still have a lot of other things that, whether it be valve exercising, doing locates, fixing the stuff that still isn't corrected from the water project and also the stormwater project. So their days aren't just an hour.
Oh, stormwater, stormwater's not the water departments, correctly come wrong.
Straight.
You are correct, you are correct, but I'm just stating that there's still issues, it's ongoing there that still haven't been corrected. And as far as the stormwater, I do feel like the, the water department is rising, raising valves and stuff like that that were covered over. So they're helping out as far as that goes.
And as far as the department heads, I just wanted to make sure that we are doing things, uh, in a manner that we're keeping, staying responsible with our employees for the town and for watching our own bus.
Cause for too much longer, we're gonna have to start mowing the streets, so.
Any more on that Cecil?
No.
Steve? Cory, Mike? What are we gonna do?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
If you guys decide to do department heads and you vote on doing that, some sort of training for not me, him, you guys, you sit down, have a training on what everybody's responsibilities, what you can and can't do, what stuff.
I don't think it should be, I'm like with you there on that Kerry, but it should be a micromanaging kind of, that thing.
I've had, been involved for a long time and I've been micromanaging and haven't been micromanaging. I'll say right now, I'm very happy here with the way things going, but it is what it is, you guys do what you gotta do. My only thing is, is just like us as law enforcement, if we do anything new, or not necessarily new, but something that we haven't done before, we get training on it, we get educated on it. Everybody does, so we know what's going on and what we can and can't do. That's my suggestion if you do go that route.
And that way there isn't one that can come back and say, well, I didn't know.
Exactly, exactly. So that, that would be my suggestion if you do go that route.
It's not a micromanage or anything else like that, I mean, when you have daily duties that you're supposed to do on that side and you're not doing them, is that considered micromanaging when you're told?
I'm not, I'm not addressing that, I'm just saying, everybody needs to be educated on what, how to do it.
Uh, we've had multiple meetings as far as on daily tasks and stuff like that, so.
What are you guys gonna do?
And the thing is though, with a department head, it's not giving a direction because that one person does not have more say so over what the board is on that side of it. So as far as anything that needs to be done, that has to be taken to the board.
Right.
So it is, any issues arise, that individual calls the department head and deals with it that way instead of calling someone else. That's the way it should be, so.
So we're gonna take a vote on this or what are we gonna do?
Let's take a vote on it.
I didn't hear you, wait a second.
Let's take a vote on it.
So I'll make a motion for department heads.
Second?
Second, Dan.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Aye.
So then.
Two to two.
You want to? Get your. Trina's not in here, I don't know.
So now what?
Come in.
It was two to two.
Right, I'm sustaining from it, so.
You're lucky.
I'm staying out of it, sustaining myself. So I reckon that leaves that up to Trina, correct?
It does.
What?
We took a department head vote, it was two to two, I'm sustaining from it per se, so.
So you're refusing to vote?
Yep.
Then I say gay.
Okay, then we'll, I guess we'll have to sit down at some point and figure out who's over who. We'll go that route. Uh, department reports. The needs on the street department. Uh, they're needing another skid of cold patch. They need to finish the drain on Green Street, also need to patch Main Street before coughing days.
Let me ask, in regard to that, do we wanna make painting a priority or patching Main Street first?
Well, because of Levi coughing days, you definitely need to get the cold patch and get Main Street fixed, so somebody doesn't have a lawsuit.
Agreed, speaking of streets and parking and paint, where are we at on that?
Kyle, you guys just got some painting in there.
So we gotta, we gotta tester, like tester gallon to try out, make sure it actually matched with what he was using spray paint wise to do the grates. Um, obviously they said the spray paint doesn't work as well on the curbs. As far as I know, all that paint that he used in that one gallon turned out good, I think he used it up here by the fire department.
Wow, I haven't examined.
Yeah, I think if you look, it's right up here, just on your guys' curb, right out front.
Yeah, I think if you look, it's right up here, just on your guys' curb, right out front. So it turned out really well, but that's because it's not this fast dry, yet dry, and that's what was causing all the issues, because when you use that stuff in the summertime, that stuff dries in about five seconds. Versus this still has like a cure time of about thirty minutes. So it allows him time to advocate, continue to roll on, kinda move, he can use a sprayer or a roller, whichever turns out looking nicer. That's also in quotes.
I think they, I think it turned out.
I, I, I think it matches.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly. The only thing I will say is they talked about asking, seeing if we could do possibly two skids and cold patch, just because of, we already went through that one and we still have a bunch of issues that we know are gonna continue to arise, so.
And it equals out to be cheaper to buy it by the skid than by the bag, so, but you guys, because of how much a skid costs, you have to vote on to approve your skids.
What is the price of a skid?
I believe it's four fifty somewhere around there.
Four, it's four something.
It comes out of streets, right?
It ends up being like twenty cents cheaper per bag if you buy it by the skid, I think, I did math once, but it's gonna wow.
Twenty or twenty bucks.
Yeah.
And there's sixty-three bags in a skid. Sixty, sixty-three.
Only thing is, is when they go to do it, they need to make sure that they're cleaning them out, just not piling it over the existing that's already down there, all the loose debris, any grass that may be growing in it. I literally watched them like camera be covered up as far as the grass and everything else in the hole. So it's not gonna stay.
So you guys want the two?
He was gonna ask for two, but he wasn't sure if he'd be allowed to ask for two, so.
Look, the amount.
What did we say the amount was?
No, I know, I mean, how much do they have in the street department?
Oh, the street, there shouldn't be any problems, I never go negative in the street department.
I'll make a motion to get two skids and cold patch.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, all the, all three departments, they're wanting to get a sewer camera to help with water lines, sewer lines. Can be used to help for the drains, the storm drains to help locate where lines are running, and if we have cracked lines or broke lines. Um, must be one with the locate, there's three quotes in here. Uh, there's one for eleven hundred ninety-nine ninety-nine, fourteen sixty-nine, and twenty-two, twenty-two eighty-eight. Could that be split on all three?
That just, as a sewer camera, just come out of sewer.
That can be used for storm.
Well, I don't think storms-
Yeah, it can split it between, so we're in storm. And so it'd be the, the cheapest of the, the, what did you say, eleven?
Eleven ninety-nine.
Yeah, that one.
Would four hundred be a good investment, cause each time that a guy comes out and does it, it costs us-
Two forty.
Two forty.
Yeah, and see, Ron, we never bought one before, cause Ron had one, and if he absolutely had to use it, he would use his own. So that's why we never bought one.
Three foot. And that's the thing, Jason Allen's is two hundred and fifty feet, so for it to be worth it for us to buy, we gotta get something that's at least two fifty or more.
Okay, a motion to purchase the sewer camera for eleven ninety-nine?
A motion to purchase the sewer camera for eleven ninety-nine?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, yellow paint quote from Kimball. Um, five, is that five gallon? Five gallon at a hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-five cents each, which is seven thirty-one seventy-five. On, though they designate in the front and the back here, uh, fire lanes, is that how we done that?
Well, there's a quite, I'm waiting for a call from the, in the engineer, because of the question on caller.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, but that's the intention though, is, uh, just, it ain't gonna go all the way across the street, just over to where it's not gonna be, it's gonna be part of fire lane, and then twelve, let's say twelve inches or a little bit more out, so.
Cause I, I thought that the fire lane was actually red, I believe, but-
It was yellow out there.
Well, the engineer, the question is, is-
If the fire line has to be, uh, maroon red.
Well, the engineer said it could be marked yellow according to state statute with white lettering. But he said the yellow lettering is also, he's, he's supposed to be getting back to me, and he hasn't yet.
Okay.
And that was two weeks ago.
Right. Don't want to breath. It's state.
Yeah, eleven.
It's hard for the force to say that, Diane.
It's a state.
Yeah.
So can I get a motion, or do we wanna have more discussion? Not as much paint for the curbs, or do we wanna go ahead and get these five gallons so that they can get?
I mean, it's-
Get it going.
It's not like it's gonna go bad if he doesn't use it all and uses, has some for next year, is it? It'll still be good next year.
As long as it's not opened up, it should be, yeah.
As long as it probably won't freeze either.
Well, it'd have to be left in their offices or in their, cause it's heated on the one bay.
Yeah, so it's paint, it's in a cabinet that's inside the heated and cooled off areas, so.
But how much is needed? Does he really know, or is he just?
Do you know, if he's-
So we're ballparking five gallons to get most of the town done.
Could be more, need more, could be not need as much.
He could need four gallons, he could need like another gallon or two, you know? We're just kinda-
I'll make a motion to get the five gallons of paint.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All three of the employees are wanting to be able to do a rotate coming to council meetings, all three of them rotating, uh, to make sure things are properly being voted on, and if any questions will be present, um, someone will be here, one of the three of them will be here to be able to answer. Um, they say they will use comp, use it as comp time, not overtime.
If they're filling out, and we do department heads on that side of it, they'll be communicating with the department head, and, um, the department head should be able to answer any questions that's going on. And as they just wrote down, they could write, write down a li- a list of their needs on that side of it.
This was obviously down before department heads.
I still think it's a good idea to have, like, one of the guys in here.
I do too.
I think, I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it, because like I say, they can answer questions, it takes a lot better, even if one of them would call any of us.
So- And I think it's fine to use a lot of the comp time.
Well, that's the way that they did it before, is they left at two, Ron and whoever the other person was, they left at two on council meeting days. And they still got paid for eight hours. So if they rotated, that would still leave two employees here, instead of like it used to be after two o'clock or somebody called, either their water turned off, there was just S O L.
So we need to vote on that, or?
It will be another change in the personnel policy, cause the, it used to be in the personnel policy that they were required to attend.
And then we took it out.
Yeah.
So we wanna table that until next month?
Well, I'm just adding to my note up here to change it too.
Is everybody okay with that, before she goes and makes that change?
Yeah, no, fine, yeah.
Sounds good.
Make that change for us, please.
Yeah.
Write that down.
Um, the sewer department, Webland Solutions, uh, to install septic tank at three oh five Ross.
That was last month, with you guys.
Yeah, you only, you only approved the tape.
You made a motion to accept the bid from the quarry.
I think that's where we're coming in with the, one of them being here, and it was all confused kinda deal.
Yeah.
Cause I thought-
Because we-
Right, the way we thought that McCurry's was doing all of it, not setting the tank and yada, yada, yada.
And then they fair, figured it out after the vote was already-
Right.
-after they had already voted on it.
So basically, we need to vote to pay this invoice from Web's Land Solutions, correct?
I'll make a motion to pay the Web landscaping invoice.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, they're needing to build a new leaf box this year for leaf cleanup. They will have prices together for next month's meeting.
As far as the leaf box, there was a couple holes that needed to be repaired, it was completely disassembled, and it's just been laying back there rotting, not taken care of. So anything that's being spent, it needs to start being taken care of.
Right, and I think that, I wonder if we could figure out something to put on it?
Paint it.
Paint it, metal it, something on the outside that, I mean, you were originally talking maybe fifty dollars to repair it, maybe a hundred at the most, and now we're gonna be hundreds in order to build a minimum. Right. Trash pumps, right, that where you wanna go now?
Yeah, like I said, I just did it, cause I wasn't sure what we were gonna actually vote on, so.
They, being Walker and Kyle, what day was that, where were you guys, where were you guys gonna?
So it was, no, it was the trailers, when that service line had busted.
Okay, yeah.
Um, cause we were digging, our three inch trash pumps don't work. So the one, he's still trying to get up and running, it looks like it might run, he's still trying to get it to run. The other one needs like completely, kinda like cleaned out and stuff, like the head was completely rusted, pissing shot. I mean, cobwebs all throughout, once you pulled the head, I mean, it was just covered in cobwebs. So obviously, stuff had gotten down in there, started to actually kinda, like, you couldn't even get it to spark with the new spark load. So, talking with Doug, Doug said our best bet is to get something that's called a full trash pump, which is that one that's like nine hundred bucks. He said, if we can't keep up with what we got running with that and our two inch trash pump that we mainly use for the sewer, he said, then you definitely have to call somebody in, because it doesn't matter how much it's running, if you can't keep up, you can't. It's like three hundred and eighty ga- eighty-nine gallons per minute.
That's what I was just getting ready.
I know, I saw it.
Cause I'm like, trying to figure out the difference between the two.
So that's like three hundred and eighty-nine, I think one one's like two eighty, and one one's like two seventy or something.
Two ninety on the-
One, yeah.
The semi.
None the other one was a semi too. But after talking with Doug, which is certified operator, he said that we wanna go with a full trash pump rather than a semi, because the semi ain't gonna allow the rocks to go through. It's just a closet, clog it, versus a full trash pump will just grab that rock and just shoot it out.
Yeah, this one says, the commercial duty quickly removes water with mud, sludge, sand, and rocks up to inch and a quarter in diameter, so.
So put a star on the one that you're, that I approved.
Okay, so, or do we want to? I know you guys really need them.
We just need one that works.
Right.
And so, I mean, if we need to table it, we can table it, but like I said, we can also take it out of sewer too.
Have you got good suction hoses? Yeah.
Yeah, the hoses we still have.
I'm just wondering, have you, I mean, these are two for the, the semi and the, the full are from Harbor Freight, correct?
I believe so.
And then the other ones from Lowe's, kinda T S C's got some too.
Yeah, I mean, we, like I said, if we wanna dig some more, we can.
And that's up to, everybody here.
So are you looking at getting two new ones, or are you looking at just getting one?
If we have one new one, we would be fine. Yeah, it'd be nice to have two, because that's what Ron had, and Ron said when you're running two, three inches, like you, you don't see anything. But, obviously with payments and stuff, I understand if, if we can get one.
Regardless of what we get, they still, they're in, have to maintain, take care of what they're getting, because I've literally seen them pump sitting outside in the weather.
Right.
Out there by the shop, so that can't happen anymore, just for a simple fact that, that the reason why they're not working now is cause they're not taking care of what it is that they have.
And I think it's not just these three, it's like years back.
No, I'm just saying, you know, it has to be taken care of, and nothing should be left out.
So do we want to get, have them get prices on and compare the full trash pumps, or do we just wanna go ahead and?
I'd say, yeah.
Get this one.
You got this one here for full. Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying, do we want them, we want them to go get two more for the full?
He needs a comparison for the, for similar items, not semi and one full, yeah.
I would say get comparison for the full trash pumps.
Carrie, you, oh wait a minute. You wanna do yours?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Yeah.
So, um, on the vehicle side of it, um, I'm gonna request permission for F two to be able to take his vehicle home. Um, the reason why I'm asking council's permission, because the take on policy gives me authority to do that, but he lives outside the fifteen mile fringe, therefore I have to ask your guys' approval to allow him to take that vehicle home. He's told me- Carol?
Yes?
He has told me and agreed that he'll even put gas in the vehicle. It will be just to and from, and only the trainings, and that's, that's all it will be used for. Um, I knew one of the questions was gonna come up about, once we get reserves going, whatever, well, they can drive my truck, he can leave his whenever. It just, uh, I think it's something that would be beneficial to him. He's only required to put twenty hours in a week, and he puts anywhere from twenty to thirty some hours in a week. So he goes over and beyond, um, so I think it would be a nice thing for him to be able to take the car back and forth from his house. Um, again, it would be just to and from, and that's it, and he's even willing to put a tank of gas in it, so. Um, I'm just requesting you guys', uh, to vote on that, to allow him to take that vehicle home.
So you're wanting it to sit down there full time?
Do what?
You're wanting it to sit down there full time?
As far as, at his house?
Yeah.
Just, just like a take home car vehicle? So, and to be beneficial for him, he's already got one vehicle that's in the shop because of how many miles he puts on and stuff like that, personal vehicle, so.
My only concern would be as far as during the week, as far as if you're, when you're driving the Dodge, you're going down, having the other vehicle here during the week, that's my only concern, as far as him taking it. I'm perfectly fine as far as on the weekends, you know, as far as transporting and all that. The only concern I have is during the week, as far as when you're working, the Dodge goes down, you need a vehicle.
We could tackle that if it, if it does happen.
Yeah. That, that's my only-
I think he only had one incident, an actual gotham went down for a couple days, but that was just a fluke.
Or with, I was gonna say with his school car, he could probably, I mean-
Well, he comes through here, he drives right through here, every single day anyways, so.
Right.
So you're talking about driving the police?
No, if his truck went down.
Well, no, I'm just saying, so in other words, driving the police cruiser back and forth every day?
No.
To bring you here, or it's just on, you know, when he's working?
His truck went down.
Right, okay.
And like you-
Well, no, that's what I would make that arrangement to where-
Right.
Like they call him and say, hey, bring the car today, you need to drop it off, and then-
Right, yeah, and you just drive it up on Fridays, if you're working Friday night. And that, and then he also can bring Rebel on it, instead of his shaggy dog and his other one, in his personal car.
I'm just, uh, questioning if you guys allow that to happen.
Should we have that attorney look at it? Or?
I don't know what the per, the take-home policy says, if there's already something in there that states, he can do it with your guys' permission, then all you need is to vote on that, to give him permission.
My understanding, the way it reads, anything out the fifteen mile radius of the town, or town limits, that's request special permission from you guys.
And also Wayne County.
If, if, if he was within the fifteen mile, I can give the authorities a technical, according to this policy.
As long as it's in Wayne County, cause it's in there as far as in Wayne County.
No, it just, it just gives a fifteen mile, and then reasonable distance is what it says.
So you're wanting to change the personnel policy, or just?
No, it wouldn't change, it wouldn't change anything.
Right.
The way I understood it is, if it's, if it's past the fifteen mile radius, then I can't give authority for him to take it home.
Right.
I have to ask your guys' permission, special permission, for him to take it, since it's outside that fifteen mile radius.
Yeah.
That's the way I understand it.
I mean, as long as you guys work out, as far as if, if you need it, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, and I'd be willing to make that motion on that side of it.
I'll run second, second, on paper?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, second thing, I was tasked with coming up with solutions for parking back here, uh, you guys got a picture of a proposed, nice, just a proposed, and what I would like to do, and I talked to Kyle too, this is kinda in his realm too, um, get those rubber parking brake, or parking blocks, whatever you call them, they're cheaper route, um, than concrete, concrete's expensive right now. And create spots behind here, Trina would have her own spot, your deputy would have her own spot, uh, trustee would have her own spot, and Terrell would have a spot, and then create public parking on that side, and then help with the parking issue with, um, citizens. Behind here, they would have public parking back here.
Are you gonna sign?
No, I, I can't, I can't assign, just like a public parking. I mean, as far as assigning for like Trina have her spot, you know?
Well, if it's public parking, then.
Well, on this, you know what I meant.
The apron's not public parking, that's what he's talking about.
Trina would have her spot, and then all that, just make, just.
I've asked for a parking sign for a while now.
I'll be no five number one.
But anyways, this is my proposed solution, um, from my estimates, it can be done for less than a thousand dollars, um, roughly. Um, there's, uh, Shane's got some prices on parking curb in there.
This one with the pictures, are them two the same one?
Well, it printed, it printed out weird.
I was gonna say, there's no numbers whatsoever on this.
There, there's.
It looks like it's.
That's a picture of what.
So they're thirty-nine dollars a piece?
Yes.
Those.
Those, there's another company in there that's a little cheaper, and you have to get the hardware to mount it in the ground and all that stuff.
Just get, yeah, just rebar to drive in.
Yeah, just rebar stuff. This way we create a bunch of public parking over here, Trina, and then we have designated spots up towards the building, and I think that would help with the solution with the parking behind there, with the neighbors.
So you're gonna make that center section no parking?
Well, it would be right in front of that apron, for that door, that would be no parking, that would be my suggestion.
So when the firemen pull up and block me in, I can make you give them a ticket now?
I can, I can actually.
Sure.
I can actually, once we do what we gotta do, and with the new parking one that's, I can, uh, deal with that stuff.
So. So the second one here, that's got the, the rebar with it, or they call it spike kits.
Yeah.
It comes out to thirty-four dollars a piece.
There should be a total on there.
Right, I was just figuring out.
Yeah.
Because this one don't have the, the rebar.
There were so many companies, when you popped up that stuff, there's so many companies you could choose from. Now, I think Clean offers them, but they were like sixty, seventy dollars a pop.
Yeah, Clean is expensive.
Yeah, they were, it's expensive, and that was without hardware, except with core and main. I, I just went in and checked, I, I pulled some off, so. But that's my idea, solution to help with the parking back here, and then once that's parked, no parking back there, so.
Do you want me to see this? The con, he's got a price here for concrete, and also, that's sixty-one ninety-nine each, and sixteen of those would be nine ninety-one. Uh, sixteen of the rubber ones with the hardware is seven eighty-five forty-four, and then without the hardware, the other ones are six thirty-nine twenty. Can we, um, can we do, can we pull this out of edit?
Can.
Kevin's a governmental thing, I can't watch it.
Well, now, are we gonna have anything, no, um, have, have we accumulated more, because like I said, we're putting everything into the streets?
No, what I, the total I gave him was based off when I did that figuring, which was at least two months before the meeting, and it wasn't everything that was available on edit, so, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you an amount that's gonna deplete edit.
Well, I, I, I don't think I was asking.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
As far as this layout that you're doing, so you're gonna have the people drive in over the curb?
No, they'll come in.
No, not here, back here, so they're gonna come off the line, or mill, and pull up over the curb, because they're gonna have that blocked off for those there. And then what, if the school gets mad, you're not able to, they put a fence all the way across there, because that's their property, then you're not gonna have any parking.
Did you not?
I don't think that's gonna be an issue with the school.
I was gonna say, didn't you talk to the school?
I talked to the superintendent, and he's okay with whatever, he just likes to have those extra four spots over on that side, just, the, her professors like to park there.
But why, is that like a new parking?
But I mean, as far as if someone pulls in, and someone, how much space is in between there?
You gotta allow room for them to be able.
There should be enough to get out, and the, the one spot.
We've got one truck, oh, okay, these doors here, we got one truck that comes out this way towards the basketball court.
Yeah, and then of course, when they play basketball, you don't want a bunch of cars sitting there.
Like I said, this is just a preliminary.
Drawing.
Drawing, just an idea.
So we wanna table this till next month?
And give you all the time to think about it, yeah.
Look at it, maybe.
Taking a motion to table the parking situation behind the building?
Take a motion to table parking situation behind the building.
Second.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Um, visitors forum, neither one of you have anything?
They're just here to watch.
So are we gonna set anything up as far as, um, with the David and Walker, as far as that their one year? Yes. Is that supposed to be the?
I was, I planned on emailing you all later in the month, when they have both been here exactly a year to find out, when you wanted to schedule a meeting.
And we can also do the.
Cause it's gotta be two or four, or four or eight hours.
Three months, as Laura talked about, as far as the job performance.
Yeah.
Um, one other thing, back to the parks, um, if you guys aren't aware, I've got, Chris Williams, what's his company name?
Gold Star.
Gold Star, Gold Star Concrete, going to pour us a sidewalk from the street to the gazebo, and we have purchased twenty brick, twenty-five bricks, twenty or twenty-five bricks, and they are at Chuck Powell's right now, getting, getting engraved with the, the memorial names that Trina's been reflecting for what, four or five years?
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah.
And he's going to charge us only for the concrete, which I think is a.
That was all.
I think he said a thousand dollars, do we need to vote on that, or?
That's, that's something that's been dotted on and approved years, four years ago.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make everybody aware of what's going on, that.
And I believe he's also doing that pad that's in between.
Yeah, I think.
That section there, that's got all the tiles.
Yeah.
I believe he's also pouring that.
It'll be like good to see it done.
Yeah.
My, my plan is to get it done, get the bricks set, and have some kind of ceremony, dedication ceremony kinda deal. At some, I would like to have it done before Calpada's, but we'll see.
I don't know what Harry's at, but I know he had said something about putting in another camera right in that area, cause he's got a blind spot there at the park.
Yeah, we, we have a blind spot in that general area, I've called, uh.
Uh, don't ask him.
I forget his name now, and he, he's, he was supposed to get back with me, and, uh, come out and look and see what we could do. There's actually an extra line that's actually out there ran already, just in case we wanted to add another one, but to cover that, there, there's a little bit of a blind spot there. So, that's something to may wanna consider too.
Yeah, once he gets back, it is just.
Yeah. I'll, I'll call him again.
Yeah.
Huh? Oh, two, yeah, that's what the.
Twenty-five.
Is, is twenty-five, or name, her name.
And Chuck is.
And what goes on, just her name?
Yes.
That's it?
Well, Chuck's charging us twenty dollars for one line, or it was twenty-five for two, is that right?
I can't remember.
I think that's what it was, but I mean, we got, we got the cost of the brick also in there, so, in which they aren't, they aren't nothing, so.
Um, builder supply said that they would continue to help, because it's a memorial.
Yeah, they cut us a pretty good deal.
They cut them in at like seventy-nine cents a brick, or something like that. Shane was nice enough to pay out pocket all grades. I'm giving him a big head, but we got.
I did, I handed Kyle money for him. So I mean, that's, I think that's gonna be a good thing for us, so. Uh, can I get a motion to approve, approve claims and payments?
Make a motion to approve claims and payments.
Second. Second, on paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to stay for another hour?
And make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.